All right, at this time we'll reconvene and speaker will be Mr. Crockett. I would like to point out because of some power outages that we've had, we're trying to take the minutes by shorthand a little bit over there, but we may have missed some things completely. So Sam, that's why we saved you so we know we have power.
I had to go to the bathroom. Pass around the little updated revenue statement for the month of February. We've had quite a bit of collections and stuff this month. They got my little nasty gram in there, their tax tickets, telling them about the attorneys. So it brought in some people. On our consolidated account report, we're currently at forty-eight million, six hundred and ten thousand dollars. And then in our general fund balance, first February was twenty-eight million, two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. And the updated revenue statement that's coming around collected a total of seventeen million, fourteen thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars as of Friday afternoon, I guess is when I updated this. For the month of February, we've taken in additional four hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars of tax. Two hundred and twenty-five thousand of that is at PPTRA, our monthly, our payment for the quarter for PPTRA. But we took in two hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars of additional tax of that. About a hundred and forty thousand was real estate tax, thanks to, I guess, those little nasty grams I sent out. Seventy thousand dollars worth of personal property. And on the thing about the judicial sale, we sent the attorney a list of about two hundred and forty-four names. Out of that list, we've had, of our delinquent collection letters, we've had forty-four contracts. People have come in and signed contracts with us. We had to make some of them up to two years this year at this time because they owed a lot. Times are tight, I guess. So we have about a hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of contracts signed right now. We got seven contracts pending. People have come in and talked about it, but they didn't have the money to make their first payment. I don't take, I don't sign a contract with them until they put some skin in the game and make a payment. And so I had about twenty thousand dollars worth of contracts still pending whether they, they got until Friday to do it, you know, because that's the deadline on it. So we've got quite a few contracts. The trick's just getting them to pay. And that's like it always is, get them to pay, but...
You've had contracts before, though. What percentage would you guess, Sam, follow through? I know it starts out pretty good, hopefully.
Starts good, probably maybe half, you know, they just sort of fade off into the sunset and you never hear from them again. We've made some changes in the way we keep up with it this year. We, I've got one girl, we've set up a spreadsheet and payments are due by the twentieth of the month. And twentieth of the month, the ones that haven't paid, we're going to send them a form letter, a form letter about twice. And then after that, send their name to John Wright. So, I mean, just going to have to do it, I guess, try to collect. But we're, hopefully, you know, some more people will come in this week and pay before we have to send all those names down there to him. But that's right now, that's going to be about two hundred names that we're sending down there. People that, there are some people that owe more years, but it's very little bit of money and it's nearly not worthwhile turning it over to him for collection. But due to the expense involved in it and just the hassle of doing it all, you know, so it's really not worthwhile. You kind of just have to pick and choose and make, and pick the ones that are going to be more worthwhile for the county. And then the other tidbit of information from our last judicial sale, we finally got the letter from John over to Hayden's office. We had a total of a hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars in escrow accounts nobody claimed. So the county is claiming those. Of that, twenty-four thousand, ninety-three dollars is a town of Wiffel share. So that left us with a total of a hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars. And I was talking to Hayden the other day, but there's a claim on two, two pieces of property still that Tommy Jackson made one and another family member made one. We're not sure how much we're going to get out of those. But as it is right now, we're looking at ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars that we are, we know we're going to get from that last judicial sale to come into the county general fund. So it's, we had two good pieces of property on that one. That one there beside Applebee's and that fifty acre track over Berensfield. Turned out making some money. So we're going to get about a hundred thousand dollars out of that. So that's going to be a hit. And that's about all I got. Anybody got any questions?
Any questions for Sam?
I have a question. The nine, you was talking about the ninety thousand dollars that we'll get. That's on top of getting their back, back taxes paid, right?
Yeah, that's additional money.
Because the back taxes, I mean, it comes out before that goes into that account for them to come get it.
It does, right. That's just money that you sell a priest property and that's what it brought in and the excess money goes into the escrow account for Hayden and then people have two years to claim it.
Yeah, alright.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have a commissioner. Do you have anything?
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am. Welcome, Fay.
Thank you. On the, right, on the license fee for the county stick, in place of the county stickers, the question I have, if we're taxing them in the two thousand and thirteen tax ticket, we haven't assessed those vehicles for fourteen, so how are we going to charge that twenty dollar fee to something we haven't assessed yet?
I don't think I understand your question. Could you maybe?
Okay, we assess on January first of each year what you have, what vehicles you have. Okay, the license fee is for, is going to be on our two thousand and thirteen tax tickets.
Yes, ma'am.
But it's for two thousand and fourteen.
Yes, ma'am.
We have not assessed those two thousand and fourteen vehicles yet. How are we going to put that license fee in thirteen for fourteen vehicles?
I still don't really, I don't think it makes any difference whether they've done a system because it's a straight fee if you have a vehicle.
But if they don't have that vehicle on January first of fourteen, and we've charged them a fee in thirteen, that, it just don't, I just don't understand how we can do that when we haven't assessed the vehicle.
In other words, I think she's saying if you buy a car
Between...
in August of two thousand and thirteen, she hadn't assessed it yet, so I'm not going to get a sticker fee in December or even if I bought it in February.
Well, even if you bought, like, if you had a vehicle in, in December when your tax ticket is due, but you didn't have that same vehicle, you don't have any vehicle, say, on January the first of fourteen, but we're sending the assessment fee for fourteen on the thirteen ticket.
Well, if I didn't have a vehicle, I'd come talk to you about it. But I think most people are going to have a vehicle, I would assume.
But, but you may, you may have three or four vehicles and you may get rid of a couple of those vehicles by the end of the year. So I don't, you know...
Mr. Attorney, can you, we resolve this?
I have to look and see. I don't know. I'll try to find something out and let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Sheriff King.
Thought we had a new sheriff.
Yeah, I did too. He, he got up and came down, didn't he?
Yeah, yeah.
As they said, Sheriff.
I'm listening to the ones that got the gun.
That's right.
Everybody keeps telling me that. I don't even think about this thing. Good morning to you all.
Good morning, Sheriff.
Have some news. This was released yesterday from the compensation board. There's a variety of information on it. Sheriff's and chief deputy, not chief deputies, but master deputies, funding had ended. They would fund what was still there, but if you lost those positions, it disappeared. The General Assembly is providing that the governor signs off on this. They have restored one million, nineteen thousand dollars to address the reductions in the career development program. So there is a good chance, to make it simple to you, if, we have four master deputies positions. I'm not a certified sheriff, even though I could have been, but I'm not going to put my staff through all the work to certify me when I'm the only recipient of that benefit. I'm not going to do it. But I do have four master deputies. Previous to this, if one of those master deputies was promoted or left, that position as master deputy was gone. According to this, it's been restored. So we should be able to keep four master deputies.
Sheriff's deputies at all times.
Yes, which has been a big issue with the Sheriff's Association. They are proposing, and once again, depending on the governor, a three percent for all constitutional officers, with the exception of the Commonwealth attorneys, which they've worked another deal with them. So there will be a three percent raise that's being proposed. And this has been approved by both the House and Senate. We're waiting on the governor.
Let me ask you a question. The superintendent said that, of course, six hundred employees, his two percent would cover four hundred, but your three percent will cover all of them?
Yes.
Good.
The best news for the county is that they have allocated forty-five million dollars that will eliminate the reversion clearing account for the aid to locality, which, correct me if I'm wrong, will eliminate us from having to refund back to the state monies that were given to the sheriff's office in the late, aid to locality, which last year was a chunk. For me, it's a chunk. You know, a thousand dollars for me means a lot.
Seventy-six means a whole lot more, doesn't it?
Do what?
Seventy-six meant a whole lot more, didn't it?
Yeah, darn right it did. Seventy-six thousand dollars and almost, well, if I'd had any hair. But anyway, we do have our vehicles in now, three SUVs, four patrol vehicles are at the Ford dealership. We will begin outfitting those as soon as they finish their preliminary work that they have to do at the dealership, which is filling in the fluids and taking all that off, making sure that things up to spec. And then they will be farmed out for installation of radios, computers, hand marked, as well as bar lights on the Mr. Hale has asked for a exploratory report on trash pickup, being manned by members of the sheriff's office. I have provided a budget to Mr. Dalton for our proposal on that. I'm willing to have two deputies assigned to the trash pickup. Mr. Reeves will give you the balance of the details of that particular thing. But Mr. Reeves, Mr. Dalton, V. Dot, myself, met and discussed this particular issue on being able to have a with-county trash pickup. The superintendent of the regional jail was also there and seemed to be agreeable to provide us with inmates. So this would be a gun game. There is one interesting thing about that. V. Dot has made the offer to pick up the trash. All we have to do is notify the area supervisor.
Tell them where it's going to be.
Tell them where the trash is. Well, you tell them where the trash pickup is going to be and then they'll come by and pick it up.
And also provide the bags.
Yeah, and the big orange bags that everybody's familiar with. But once again, there's, there's some other issues that Mr. Reeves, I believe, will talk to you about. The camera program, there are certain areas we're still working on because we keep getting caught putting the cameras up. So we immediately have to take them back down. We can't afford to lose our camera. But one of the areas of the, a problem area due to the dumping of tires was on JIDA property in Ivanhoe that bordered Carroll County. The only person I didn't see on camera was members of the Board of Supervisors, Salal, and myself. I've never seen so much traffic on two little paths going back through the woods. Of all of those vehicles, we can only prove that one was dumping because he came in with a refrigerator and he left without it.
Without it.
However, it was not a local vehicle. We have looked for that. All the patrol units have like a picture of the vehicle and has a distinctive mark to it. It'll be easily recognizable. We also have the game commission checking on it as well because the game wardens were in that area when the dump took place. And they had, it was pretty daring, in my opinion. But the interesting thing about it, the refrigerator is no longer there. And I don't know how JIDA feels about this. The majority of our photos was a gentleman from Freeze who brings in a drunk truck and has been cleaning that site up on his own, picking up just truckloads of scrap metal.
Getting up with the scrap metal.
And one of the photos shows this particular individual
Getting that refrigerator.
hollering "refrigerator off." So we lost our evidence, but we still, we still have the photos. We did have one drug bus that's a result from this. A particular vehicle that we were looking for had frequented that area. And we took care of that individual. We did recently, I believe it was Friday, take down an active meth lab from an individual who has engaged in that activity far, far, far too long. We were hoping this time with his previous convictions of manufacturing methamphetamines that the court will take a serious eye when they hear this case. I'd like to thank you all for the approval that you gave us several months ago for the new live scan. The new live scan is kind of like comparing a laptop now to a mainframe computer from thirty years ago. It's a little tiny small thing. And it's very user friendly. So we've been able to establish accounts for everybody on it. It's working well. Everybody likes it. And thank you once again for appropriating that money for us. And the last thing I'd like to acknowledge, I'd like to thank Mr. Grant for helping us out, the sheriff's office out with a problem with a grant that had been provided to us by DCJS several years ago, prior to his arrival. We got a message from DCJS saying, "Send us our money back. You've never reported spending this money." The money had been spent, reports had been filed, final report had not been done. Mr. Grant went out of his way to get the information, contact DCJS, and make sure that everything was restored to its proper order. So I believe that that is about all I have. I don't know what, I was in the restroom trying to use a cellphone for a while, when Mr. Dr. Brandon was speaking, all I caught was the end when he was talking about how many school resource officers with-county would need to have one in each school. The General Assembly only passed a bill for a million and some odd dollars. And that, he told you quite accurately, you're talking ten school resource officers for that kind of money. I don't even know why they appropriated that amount. To me, it was a token and nothing else.
So they could say they did it.
A token.
Yeah.
Exactly, exactly. Once again, I'm not going to go into it. I spoke about it before. I don't know if Mr. Dr. Brandon addressed it or not. But there is heightened security in West County. We don't tell people when, we don't tell people where, but don't be surprised if you go by Speedway Elementary in the middle of the day and there's a police car sitting there. We take the potential of violence seriously. We'll do everything in our power to make sure that it doesn't occur. We can't make any guarantees. But the fact, and I've heard you, Mr. Chairman, say this many times, there's no deterrent to crime greater than seeing a police car sitting in front of a school. And we're doing this on a daily basis.
I will say in regard to that, that I'd subbed for Ms. Walters at Roy Tree Elementary School. And of course, the three days I was there, David Evans, Deputy Evans, was, was there, you know, greeting the kids as they came in along with, you know, Coach Eggers and that. And then he stayed and walked around until everything. So it is a presence and people are seeing that and I think that they appreciate it.
Indeed. When we first started this program, until we could get the schedules worked out, I worked next to Ms. Ellen Andrew for close to two weeks. And scared one kid. But she got used to me. I'm not surprised to frighten children of my looks. It's happened before. But without the General Assembly getting serious with this, and I'll be perfectly frank with you, I don't know if they'll ever have enough money to provide the security that I feel would be a hundred percent effective.
I think the real crime of this is that we think, we have to think we have to do that now in this world, you know?
I agree. I agree. Of course, now read a treatise the other day that was kind of, I won't go into it a great deal, but it did involve the use of prescription drugs in school-aged children. Seems to coincide with this rise of violence in the school environment. Yes.
I remember reading something about, when I come out that day, it's probably ten to fifteen people. Who is responsible for that?
Which, oh, the state police took care of that.
State police?
Yes, we, we turned it into a task force case. Didn't want to have to assume responsibility for the money spent on that cleanup. So if we turn it into a task force case, the state police will provide the funds for cleanup.
Yeah, where do you expect?
There. Depends on the size, of course. The previous contractors were, they were getting rich unnecessarily. So there are people here in the county and in Smith County that are certified to clean these up. And their bill has been considerably lower. But once again, I don't want to spend the time. I don't want to have to. So we turned it over to state police as a task force case, which we're a member of the task force. So no county funds, short of personnel, were used for cleanup. And it was hot.
Thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate it.
Joe, I'll get where you and I talked about as soon as we can get camera up the tree without somebody seeing us.
Maybe you need stealth deputies.
That's the next step. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker would be Mr. Louis LaFawn. And I'd like to introduce Louis. Louis is new to us. He's our new social service director, came on board effective February first.
February first.
February first. So we have him here at the end of February for our meeting. We're very happy to have him. And you might have had a chance to hopefully to see the Enterprise on Saturday. Had a nice article, Louis. I hope you got a chance to see it also and so forth. And did you get a chance to hear from Mr. Gordon about being on the local radio station?
Yes, I'm supposed to be on tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning, guys, up and early. So I want that radio.
I have met Mr. LaFawn, but already I can tell he's a very patient man.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you today. As Mr. McDaniel's mentioned, I've only officially been on the job since first of February, although I've been serving in an interim capacity since September of last year. So, and with that in mind, I wanted to express to you this morning a couple of things that we kind of see as our core values with social services going forward. One of those being establishing a client of professionalism within the agency. I've told our staff, we'll act as professionals when we go out into the field. We can't be treated as professionals if we don't, don't come across as professionals. Particularly being in the human services field, we should show respect and dignity for the clients that we're serving. So that's our philosophy going forward with the services that we're providing. We want to establish the spirit of cooperation and partnership, both with the county and with our community partners. And I think we've, we've gone a long way already in establishing some of those partnerships with our community partners. Emphasis on customer services and also an emphasis on excellence. I think West County has the ability to be one of the better agencies out of the one hundred and twenty-one local departments in the state. And part of that goes along with not only maximizing efficiencies, but cost containment. And that's something that we're all familiar with and all interested in is accounting. I thought what I would do today is give you some information and some of the initiatives that we've got going on. And if there are other things at future meetings that you'd like me to discuss or, or give you more detail on, I'll be happy to do that. Our agency currently has two thousand two hundred and twenty food stamp or SNAP cases. And that, that doesn't sound like a whole lot initially, but that's about six thousand recipients, or about a fourth of the residents of West County that are receiving food stamp benefits. About the same number, a little over six thousand are receiving Medicaid benefits. We respond to about forty reports of abuse and neglect on the child abuse side each month. And we have about forty ongoing service cases that we're providing services to families who have either had a founded abuse and neglect cases or prevention cases, or where we're keeping them out of the foster care system. And we currently have fifty-one children in our foster care program. We're facing several challenges in the agency. The first of sit, we're facing several challenges in the agency. The first of those being the economy. Unlike most industries where as the economy gets bad, business goes down, our business picks up the worse that the economy gets. Uh, we're seeing different people come through our doors than we've ever seen before. It's not the typical clients that we've seen in the past. Twenty-five percent of the children in West County live in poverty. Dr. Brandon mentioned earlier the need for, uh, school lunches and, and meals on weekends for, for children in our community. Uh, we see that as a concern in our agency as well. And as the economy suffers, we see different, those stressors manifest themselves in other ways. We see more demands on our services, both in our field program, uh, cutoff notices, housing needs, those sorts of things. But we also see increasing demands to our child abuse and neglect system. We get more calls of child abuse. Uh, we see increased drug use in our communities, uh, increased domestic violence, and we see more children coming into our foster, foster care system, uh, which translates into higher costs both for on our social services side and our comprehensive services program. Uh, substance abuse is another issue that we deal with on a daily basis in our department. Uh, it's something that threatens the core of our communities, our family structures. It also provides a, a huge cost to the community, both in treatment and service. Uh, in fact, the western region, uh, which West County is part of in this state, has the highest number of foster care entries of any region in the state. It's double any other region in our state. In fact, fifty percent of our children who come into foster care, their substance abuse evolved. Uh, the primary goal is to place those children with family members, either grandparents or extended family members. But it gets more and more difficult to find family members who can take those children when many of those family members are also exposed to substance abuse.
M- Mr. LaFawn?
Yes.
Is, I'm sorry. Is there, the underlying reason that we're so much higher?
Well, southwestern Virginia initially started with prescription drugs, OxyContin in the coalfield area, which kind of spread this way. Now we see more methamphetamine, uh, bath salts. We still have a problem with prescription drugs. Uh, but it's, it's just a, a problem. The interstate system and the two interstates coming together here in West County poses a problem.
So it's basically drug related, or most of it?
Right.
Okay.
We also, uh, southwest Virginia has, don't, they don't, we don't have the highest number of children who die while, uh, of child fatalities, but we have the highest number per capita of any region in the state. And well over half of those instances are due to substance abuse. So substance abuse is a problem that we deal with on a regular basis. But there are some local coalitions being formed throughout southwest Virginia, uh, but funding and of course, uh, everyone thinks the substance abuse is a problem, but no one wants it in their backyard as far as the treatment and, and some of those programs that go along with it. And finally, we're seeing an increased demand for our services. In fact, SNAP cases for West County from two thousand five to now have gone up eighty-four percent. Uh, West County is the highest county in southwest Virginia as far as increase in food stamp cases during that time period. Uh, the healthcare legislation is projected to produce an additional four hundred thousand Medicaid cases across the state. That translates to about two thousand new Medicaid cases here in West County. All of this without any additional new staff or, and with decreasing federal and state dollars to support those programs. Uh, just to give you an idea, a couple of the programs, initiatives we've got going on, we've got the Common Health Program, which is a web-based platform that allows recipients to go online. They can screen to see if they're eligible for benefits. They can apply for services. Uh, they can do their renewals, report changes through that system. Uh, they can do it twenty-four hours a day from their computer at home or they can do it in the library or other places. Uh, it doesn't require a face-to-face interview, so they can do a telephone interview with the worker. Uh, it's designed to save time. It initially started with a soft rollout earlier this year. We're into the actual implementation now. We've had a little over a hundred applications come through that program. So I think the more, uh, clients become familiar with that program, the more increased, uh, use we'll see of that program. Uh, we updated evaluations on the state side in April this year. So we went from a numerical evaluation system, which was based on quantity and quality of work, uh, to one now which identifies the core responsibilities of the job, uh, identifies specific measures that are required to meet those jobs. Uh, and a worker is either, uh, meets standards or does not meet standards. So it's a much easier system to identify how you're doing. It provides more feedback to the worker and it goes along the lines of what the state system, uh, currently is. Uh, we also provided, uh, we had identified a need for supervisory development within our agency and we have budgeted money in our budget that we'll talk about next month as far as being able to accomplish that goal. We see that as a, uh, important component to both staff development and to also cost containment, uh, by meeting the standards. Uh, this month is benefit appreciation month for our eligibility staff. Uh, and we're celebrating that tomorrow, in fact. Some local reforms that were just in the process of developing and, uh, so we really haven't seen the fruition of those. We're redesigning our child welfare system. Uh, we're going from one, which is more reactive to more prevention, uh, so that we can try to deal with some of the problems before they come through the formal channels of our CPS and our foster care system, uh, which will provide better outcomes for our clients and will also reduce or contain some of our costs. Some of that will involve our recruitment of foster parents, our training programs. We're looking at redeveloping our independent living skills program. We've contracted a number of that out in the past. We're gonna do, start doing that in-house, uh, in an emphasis of more, it's more prevention rather than, uh, child abuse and neglect. Uh. We had also submitted a request for, supplemental request for additional CSA dollars. Uh, originally, at the beginning of the budget year, we budgeted two point seven million dollars for the program. We were allocated approximately one point two million from the state. Uh, we're projected to spend somewhere around two and a half million, which is in line with what we spent last year in the program. Uh, so we're requesting the additional state funds to go along with that program. And we've, we've already budgeted the local monies to, to match it, so we should be okay on the local side. Uh, are there any questions or?
Louis, thank you. Welcome.
Thanks.
Louis, on the state side, did we budget those and appropriate them to start of the year? So.
Yeah, they're only allocated a portion of it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move to the Board of Supervisors and the first one up is the Black Lick.
Uh, just two things. One, I, I know, uh, they were, Mr. Thomasina, I think, was talking about the roads. Uh, they, I, I, I'd had to, uh, uh, you had two people call me about roads. I, I emailed Mr. Russell and in just a, a matter of a couple of days, you know, they had, they had responded. So I, I have to say that I've been, you know, very pleased with, uh, with being able to get in touch with them and, you know, and their response on it. The other thing I would like to request is that, um, because I don't know exactly where we are on it right now, the, uh, you know, the noise ordinance, maybe if, um, I don't know, through the budget process or, or whatever, sometime, if we could set maybe just a short work session on that to see exactly where we are and what we wanna do.
Ask the county attorney if you, I thought we were waiting on numbers to see, you know, the guy came and talked to us. Uh, I didn't know if you were waiting on someone to come make noise and give us a demonstration meter. Sheriff, we talked about that with you also, didn't we? What we, uh, as far as the equipment and, and checking how much noise that equipment-
We talked about previous one. One, a standard, one decimal, two, equipment.
You can say five decimals to me, but until I hear it, I don't know. That doesn't mean anything.
Well, you're not gonna hear five decimals.
Well, I, that's what I said, so I'm not gonna be able to hear it.
Didn't have the guy come.
Had a guy, guy came and talked to us, but he didn't- Yeah, I remember that. -give us a general idea of noise and stuff, but I mean, he didn't-
Well, and-
He didn't say any numbers. I mean, we've got a draft ordinance. We need numbers to plug in.
And that's what, I guess that's what I'm talking about is if we can, uh, if we can have a work session on that. And plus, I know that, uh, I think that one of the, one of the requirements is that you have to have a, a decimal meter that will record and, and, and store that, that, that number, you know, with a, like with a, a date and timestamp? Isn't that?
There's only, you can only use the approved Department of Criminal Justice system.
Right, yeah. But, but anyway, I mean, I'm not really, you know, to discuss it today, but if, if we're just looking at numbers and we have the ordinance drafted, if we could just take a few minutes sometime, uh, you know, in the next little while to, uh, kinda, uh, you know, pull that together and decide where we are and what we wanna do.
Mr. Dalton, sometime when we're looking at calendar, we'll get together and work that in for you.
That'd be great.
Uh, Wes Whitfield?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Joe Fortisal?
Well, we have had some response, uh, from B-Dot, uh, after the high water. I wouldn't exactly call it a flood, but it was high water. Had quite a few roads blocked and still a lot of debris and trash, uh, trees down. And Mr. Russell said they would get to it when they can. Uh, the, the, the road thing is not gonna go away. We, we're gonna keep talking till you retire.
Well, yeah, hopefully you'll be talking a little bit longer than that, 'cause I see that's a-
Uh, but you know, I, I am a little bit happier with what I read in the, uh, paper with the General Assembly. Looks like they are gonna start putting some money back into maintenance, which, that's, that's a good sign.
The threshold was too high, though. The threshold is for more urban, uh, than we are. That four hundred threshold of, of that money is, is pretty hard to obtain. Uh, we, we think there's a lot of, uh, traffic when, when you're driving on one of these roads, but when you talk four hundred to fifteen hundred-
Oh, I know.
Some of our oldest roads, like Archer and Major Graham, they won't make it, will they, Mr. Dalton? Uh, uh, and with the price of gas, the people can't make them go up by just driving it down the road.
Driving back and forth, yeah.
I think I looked on the six-year plan of all those roads we have on there. There's either two or three with the latest traffic counts that qualify.
Well, we could use it all on two or three roads, but it wouldn't go very far and make them very many people happy.
That's true.
Is there any method, uh, mechanism that, that you could think your way through this that we could take those monies and apply for revenue sharing with those monies? Like this lady was here this morning. I was sitting here thinking, there used to be forest highway money. There used to be money from the national forests. If, if Gene and the horse trailers are part of the problem, maybe there's some money could be helping that road because they're going into the forest and eventually into Mount Rogers, aren't they?
Uh, I don't know if it's into Mount Rogers, but it's in the national forest, yeah.
Uh, our, our road is not to the point that anybody drug the oil pans off and, uh, that, that situation up there must be pretty dire. Uh, I've had some road complaints that, that are from Mr. McRoberts' district, but either people don't know where they live, uh, or they just call somebody that'll listen to them about a road problem. About that.
Would you mind telling them how you're gonna get your road count up?
It'll work every time.
Koi?
The only thing is, uh, Ms. Cor, she's called me, uh, a couple times. So Ellen and I, we plan on taking a trip in the Nick Dure too sometime. Uh, Jean Lawson also called me. He said the water washed his drainpipe out. When the state put it back in, he got it, a hump in it and he don't like it. And he asked that-
Which road's him?
Jean Lawson lives in the whole lot of the, the Church of Pop Castle. One sixty nine. Got a hump in it. He said his wife was on a kidney transplant list. He might feel that straight now a little bit. Having to go in that store too and also a part. That him. Jean?
Well, I was hoping V-Dot would be here, 'cause I was gonna complain about the gravel roads, but since they ain't, they ain't, they just ain't complaining about them. Uh, I've got a couple of things. Most of it deals with the fire department. Uh, I asked y'all last time to send it to Buildings and Grounds about the old firehouse. They've also got an old Dodge pickup truck that they've got a skid unit in that they're wanting to get rid of. So I would ask that y'all talk about that, I guess with Buildings and Grounds too, while you're talking about the-
You could tie that surplus before then.
Yeah. Uh, what they're wanting to do is they're, it's, it's, the truck really's not heavy enough to support the tank and the water, so they're wanting to just take the skid unit out and get rid of the truck and then turn around and buy a heavier truck to put the skid unit on. Uh, so I mean, it'll just benefit the fire department. Uh, they have scheduled their, we've scheduled our fishing tournament for the first weekend in May, right offhand. I can't remember what the dates of that is. So is it, can we use the county property for that? Uh, I just, I think it's nice to just ask. Uh, the other thing was, they had asked about a fire hydrant in front of the firehouse because there's no place, we don't have a field inside.
I took care of that yesterday.
I was getting ready, that's what I was gonna ask you, was if you'd taken care of that. I think that's all I had.
On the use of the field there, Jean, if you just make a motion and see where it go?
Oh, okay. Well, I make a motion that we let them use that field for their, the two weekends. Well, actually, I don't know. I guess they only use it for one weekend, the actual field. We'll make a motion for the two weekends that they use it.
Uh. Have a second? Okay, okay. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You got it.
Thank y'all.
Yes, sir. Tim?
Uh, I have several things. First thing we'll, I'll, I'll talk about is the, the trash contract with V-Dot. Uh, I wanna make a motion that, uh, we give Mr. Dalton the authority to enter into a contract with V-Dot as, as, uh, far as the trash pickup with the inmates from, uh, New River Valley. And, uh, also, um, to get some estimates and pricing on, uh, securing, uh, the van that will be brought to the Budget Committee at a later date for us to look at.
Okay. So we don't need any motions right now from you, or?
I, I'm making a motion that we give Mr. Dalton the authority to enter into the contract with, with V-Dot.
Okay. So I thought I heard you say that, but I-
I, I second that motion.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
What, what parameters are, are in this, uh, contract?
The parameters?
Yeah, I mean, are, are we talking about so many days a week, hours a week, by month, or it's not gonna be a hit or miss deal?
The sheriff's gonna hire two people. He'll be in charge of the whole operation. And, uh, our responsibility is to fix the van so that it's safe for the sheriff's personnel to transport those. There'll be a cage to the front and a screened area to the back. And we have to provide lunches for the, uh, and the officers each day. But it'd be twenty-eight hours a week.
Okay.
Uh, you know, and there's, there's certain weather conditions, you know, temperatures and rain and so-
Inclined weather, they can't be-
Inclined weather that, that will be, uh, considering like, uh, they'll, they'll pick up the trash. We just have to call them. Uh, they'll supply the bags. Um- Just the, the contract that the county administrator has to sign, and the sheriff will sign the contract with VDOT. Uh, and that's what I'm requesting, to give Mr. Dalton authority to sign the contract.
Are we having to buy a van, or is this the van?
We're gonna use the bus.
Oh, using airbus. I thought VDOT had a van that we might could've got.
Well, they won't let us use it.
Oh, okay. Well, that's the reason I was asking, I didn't know.
It's stationed in Baywood and we can't have it. That's what they told us.
But, you know, as far as securing the van, it'd be strapping the windows, uh, putting a padlock on the back door and putting a, a cage in the front with a door in it. It's really not gonna be that expensive to, to fix the, the bus.
That's good use for the van. I don't know, are, are we using it for many other purposes?
Well, that was the original intention, except that we wanted to use it for, I guess, courtroom diversion people. We're just moving up a step. And Mr. McPeak was very kind in providing, authorizing.
And, and with two officers, we'll be getting anywhere from four to eight inmates. Now, it may vary, you know, when they, when they have people eligible to come out.
Can we do some kind of outreach to these, uh, clubs that have adopted a highway, that we still want them to do their good work? You know, there's some highways all over the county, uh, and I, I don't think we oughta discourage them from their semi-annual pickups or monthly pickups, like on some of the roads.
Well, I, I guess we're gonna do this for tourism. Maybe we can do it for, highlight a club a month that does good work out in the county, put it in the newsletter type of deal, that maybe there's a little spotlight that says, lead mines were taken, uh, adopted and picked up ten tons of trash this year or something. You're just to highlight one if that would help, Joe.
Yeah, and, and some guidance from the county. It would really help if one of those groups would take care of the Department General Services ramps. They're stretched pretty thin. Uh, one guy does all the maintenance for all of Marion District, which I don't know how he gets what he gets done. But if a local community could pick up a little bit of that for Toby, that would really, really help.
I believe you could start at the ramps that come into With County. By the time you got to into With County, you could go back and you'd have, that'd be a full-time job for him.
Yeah, and he does the best he can.
Yeah.
I'm not talking about the interstate ramps. I'm talking about the DGIF ramps.
He's talking about low ramps.
We need more DGIF ramps to get to the river, so. We did attend the function at, uh, Draper Mercantile, Friends of New River, and the Tourism Committee assayed who was there. I probably responded too bluntly, but there's a lot of people with a lot of ideas and no money. But it's still something we're, working on, law departments were there. Even the geology department from Tech, so, uh, rock doctors. I think that thing will continue, and maybe someday it will yield. They're, they're into making the river more accessible, and there, we do know there's some money available coming down the pipe for that. They're into water quality, and, uh, overall, it's a good thing. There's a thing Mr. Dalton could come out of that meeting about navigation hazard at Austinville. Some kind of rods are embedded in the bedrock over there. I don't, I've never been on that part of the river. But they, they think they're drill rods that were drilled into the bedrock, and now they're sticking, depending on the water level, can, can take the bottom out of a canoe or, or a kayak. And, uh, may, maybe we could get access and go look at those and see if we could help with it.
There are still beams or bolts or rods or whatever that was part of the ferry system many, many years ago.
Attached to that, that's during low water. It's just the right level to crack a fiberglass boat on the bottom.
So, it is a navigation hazard on the river?
It is.
Wonder, wonder if we could get, uh, gonna keep an eye open for any kind of grant money, have that corrected.
Okay.
Tim, you were through once?
No, we need, we need to vote.
We need to vote on that.
We didn't vote. Okay, I thought we.
Then I've got some other things.
Okay, I. Would you refresh me on the motion?
Um, make a motion that, uh, allow Mr. Dalton to sign, enter into a contract with VDOT on the trash pickup.
And it was second, and there's no more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I got some, just some stuff for informational purposes. Uh, Diag Expo Committee met, uh, last week, week before last, if you remember the date. Went over with the, with the architect or engineer, excuse me, uh, on the site's selection process, and, uh, they give them, uh, some good information, and, uh, it's in their ball court now to make a, a, a selection, and hopefully that will be in the near future, and, uh, they haven't, hadn't heard from Mr. Muncie on a, on another meeting date, so, uh, we're waiting here for ma'am. The Tourism Committee, uh, we met, uh, they're, uh, making some adjustments to the three-to-five-year plan, and hopefully we'll get that back to us and get it on the agenda soon. District Three, um, everybody's heard of Sequester coming March the first. Uh, discretionary programs, including those founded by District Three, government quota will be cut immediately. Uh, aging, aging activists, uh, anticipate a cut of approximately five point one percent in the current fiscal year and a ten point five percent in the following year, which would bring major cuts to all services provided by District Three. And, uh, that's gonna hurt, hurt our services that we, that District Three supplies to our seniors. There was some, uh, proposed funding increase in aging, uh, in the General Assembly, but it died. Any big, Crockett Stark, uh, sponsored some of that, but it didn't pass. And also, uh, the Farm Fresh Program at District Three, uh, I'll read this. Beginning April the first, area senior citizens can apply for the two thousand thirteen Senior, Senior Farmer's Market Nutrition Program designed to help them, them improve their nu- nu- nutrition while helping local farmers to sell their products. Details of this year's enrollment, uh, process will be announced soon at senior centers or, senior centers and local newspapers throughout the counties of Smith, With, Bland, Carroll, Grayson, Warston, in major towns of Babden, Marion, and Whiffle, uh, and the cities of Galax and Bristol. To be, to be eligible, uh, residents must, uh, be sixty years of age or older, live in one of the, the areas that was mentioned, uh, meet income requirements and, uh, return applications, uh, before the enrollment period ends. Participants must, uh, re-enroll and qualify each year. The program is limited, and, uh, participation is on a first-come, first-served basis. Qualifying participants will be notified of approval or deno- denied by mail. Like to get that out to all the senior citizens. And District Three would, you know, would, uh, like to urge any farmers in the community to participate in this. They're, they're lacking, uh, farmers that, that grow food to sell, and they're, uh, I think the farmer's market, um, is, uh, in With County is about the only, uh, place they, that they participate that the, the state changed some of the criteria, and, uh, king's produce is no longer, uh, a part of that. But they urge, uh, all the, the local farmers that grow produce to, to look in participating in this. And thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, the only thing I can report on, Mount Rogers will be having its, uh, annual meeting in Bristol this year, and you should be receiving invitations to that within the next two or three weeks, and that's all I have. We'll move to the committee reports, and, uh, first one up, budget.
Who's joining now? Mr. Chairman, the Budget Committee met on February the fourteenth, uh, twenty thirteen and made the following recommendations. One is to accept the VSTOP grant in the amount of, uh, twenty-four thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars, and that requires, uh, a match of nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-six dollars from the, uh, from the PAF for the calendar year twenty thirteen.
You've heard the motion. It doesn't require a second. Was any discussion concerning this?
It's our understanding this is like about the last year.
No, actually, Congress hasn't renewed.
Oh, okay. Okay. Okay.
Seeing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. Mr. Hall?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
And aye, thank you.
Uh, second thing is, uh, we, uh, recommend to increase the deductibles on the, uh, fiscal year fourteen. Va Court renewal and to set up a contingency fund with an amount to be determined in FY fourteen budget deliberations. We'll make that, yeah.
Again, it requires no second. Mr. Dalton, you wanna speak to that, or?
Well, what we've had is from the days when cars, uh, cost a little bit of nothing, two hundred and fifty dollar deductibles for cars, and we have five hundred thousand dollars for property insurance. There's something happening. It's costing a lot of money to process those claims. If we raise the deductibles, we can save enough on the insurance payments themselves and pay about the same amount that we were paying in the insurance bill. That's a cost savings, a pretty significant amount in next year's renewals.
And the contingency fund, if we get that set up, would help to pay those deductibles.
Anybody else have any questions? All right, roll call vote. Gene?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
And aye, thank you.
Uh, and the third thing is to amend and appropriate six hundred and fifty dollars to, uh, to the technology budget.
All right. Again, no second? Any discussion concerning that, or? Seeing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye.
And aye, thank you. County Administrator's report.
Uh, the first item is a certificate of substantial completion, branch highways for off-site mass grading. This is the rail corridor. Ask the board to authorize the settlement of that.
All right. Can I have a motion that we accept this substantial completion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
I'll second it.
It has been moved to the second. Any discussion concerning this substantial completion for the rail, uh, site on for lot twenty-four? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And aye, thank you. Laws for pause. Next item we have, Mr. Bear, myself, laws for par, laws for pause. Transfer agreement, ask for authorization to sign. Appears that everything is in order, allows, that's a transfer annul. Is there a motion to allow Mr. Dalton to sign this?
I would make that motion.
For second, say. Second, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Revised budget calendar.
Everybody, just remember how we choose the budget in the long hours, that you will be here on the twenty-fifth, sixth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth of, uh, March.
You're gonna pull an all nighter one night and just stay here and.
I'd say.
Be better in Congress, couldn't you?
I have a question on the fourth, on four fifteen. What time's that meeting? I just didn't know if it was gonna be a day meeting or a night.
I think that would be up to you guys.
Okay.
You got a preference now?
I always have a preference tonight.
It's, uh.
Friday.
Is it a Friday night?
It's on a Monday.
I was thinking it was on Monday.
Yeah, it is on Monday.
It's a Monday.
I just needed, I mean, 'cause if it's a day meeting and I needed to take the day off from driving the bus, I just needed to know.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend we have a night meeting.
All right.
Seven o'clock? All right. I don't think a motion, just put that in there as far as.
Okay.
As concerned.
Uh, next item is a letter from Judge Cox, Judge Showalter, and request that this be sent to the building grounds, and we will be meeting next week discussing this. Okay?
Uh. I would like to request right now the building grounds may be as early as possible. I'm telling, it's next Thursday, right?
Yes.
Yes, what time?
Early as possible. How long you think it would take?
I'm gonna say it takes an hour maybe.
Oh, if it's an hour, eight o'clock, seven thirty?
Is Judge Showalter coming to this, or just, just?
I'm gonna invite, uh, Judge Cox.
Did he?
Mr. Chairman, my building grounds is Tuesday morning, about three, Thursday morning.
Yeah, Tuesday morning.
Well, then I'm good anytime.
Budget Committee meets on Thursdays.
That one's early as, no, I'm, I'm on budget, if I'm.
You're not?
Y'all, y'all meet in afternoon, be fine.
Not unless you wanna be.
No, don't wanna be.
Next Thursday's industrial development.
Eight o'clock, though. That's, that shouldn't be that much right now. God, I can't remember all these things. That's one of the reasons I'm hanging it up.
So, are you gonna refer this to building grounds?
I certainly will.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Review of the agricultural and forestry district in, uh, eastern of the county? Any comments there, Stephen?
At this point in time, I don't think we can, at last, four years ago, or whatever it was, we said we would review it. I would say the review is today and be finished. We just renewed.
Can we take a motion just to renew? I think that'd be, nothing's changed in it, hasn't it?
The ordinance says.
Anybody take anything out? Huh?
The ordinance says you review it, and if you wanna look at it and say you've done it.
We all read it.
There's nothing needs to be changed, is there? All right.
Let it expire.
So, do we need a motion to renew it?
I think we need a motion to renew it.
Then I would make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Did the planning disca- uh, committee, uh, even?
No recommendation.
No recommendation? Okay. I got no problem with dealing. I think we will take a roll call vote on it, though. Any other discussion? All right, Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye.
And aye, thank you.
Next item is a letter from DQ to Kim. In the past, we had a, we did a certification through the audit process at, uh, at Landville, we closed Landville. As part of that old process, we included the transfer section. The GPSA actually needs to take on this themselves now, since we, we're not the real owner because Land County and Whiffle, down at the GPSA, and so us certifying and getting a bond for them, they need to address this at their next meeting.
Gene's pondering that right now. I'm sure he'll take care of that.
Because we are not providing certifications like we used to. We come at the Landville, we, we finished with that.
Just let Leon know and have him put it on the agenda. Just let Lynn know and have him put it on the agenda.
We don't need to make a motion for that or anything, do we?
We don't, I think Lynn, what I will tell Lynn is that their attorney needs to draw this trust agreement up, which will be cornwell out.
Yep, I think so.
Next item is the de-allocation of revenue sharing funds. Over the years, we've had several roads that we've made application for that the landowners didn't move forward with. Statewide, there's millions and millions of dollars allocated that's never been used. Turns out there is actually one road in With County that we actually built that's got some money left on, that the landowners provided us the money and we will return that.
To the landowners?
That'll make them happy.
Well, what'll happen is, mark my word, somebody will go out and say, well, we got money back and all the rest of them will come in and say, why didn't we?
Well, they wrote, in this case, they actually wrote us a check. The landowner did, one person paid for it, everybody.
Well, that's good, we got some money back. Is that it, Mr. Dalton? Does she have anything else?
Couple things here. We met this past week with the Department of Housing and Community Development on Slab Town and also Long Meadows. There will be required to have public hearings on those two projects in March before the application. It's our intent to get the advertisements and put it in the paper for the March day meeting. Amounts, somewhere about a hundred ninety thousand dollars for Long Meadows for water. And also, it's about four hundred and seventy or five hundred thousand for Slab Town for water. Our preliminary meeting, application meeting was very positive. Matter of fact, we've done one of these similar in Rakestown a few years ago, which they waived some of the rules that we have to comply with. And Long Meadows, Andy can get his plan in, they're pretty positive about this project. The issue with Long Meadows, we will have to keep the grant open for two years because the day we close the grant, Andy or Hope has to have all the lots sold within twenty-four months. So if we keep the grant open two years, if we get awarded the grant, keep it open two years. They would close the grant and he has two years from that, that would give them four years to sell the nineteen lots.
Hopefully that's doable, I would think.
If the county picks up, but that's still a lot of lots to sell in a four-year period.
They're not the most expensive lots in the whole world. Are they based on income or something?
They are based off income, but you have to have the ability to pay.
Okay.
And so to get those sold, that may present a challenge.
Mr. Dalton, when do I have the letters back or when do I need them?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, okay.
And lastly, Mr. McRoberts mentioned earlier about Baron Patterson, the old school site, the firehouse down there. Culverts overflowed, flooded the building that, I guess the firehouse, the old firehouse to the baseball. Years ago, the school board transferred that property to us. We, they had a lease with Baron Springs Home Demonstration Club, I believe it was, for the old school building. And the firehouse was, they have a lease on that same property maintained. I talked to Kirk Crawford, they're gonna talk to the fire department about it. And I went down and looked at, roof is ripped on it. Immolishing that old building. I guess basketball court we built two years ago was under three foot of mud. So Mr. McRoberts and I are gonna have a community project. He's gonna bring a Skid steer loader and I'm getting the fire department to workshop the bench. So if any of you want to be part of that community project down there, you're welcome. But we've got a problem there with the flooding, the deuce. All this, like Lady earlier, the debris came down the creek, stopped up the culverts, overflowed the culverts, went straight through the building.
Is the home demonstration or something, are they still using it at all?
They were.
They were up until the flood?
I think they have a meeting once a month.
Once a month?
Yeah, Wednesday they were there trying to shampoo the mud out of it. It's a mess and the biggest degree. I'm gonna say while we can do it, just to let you know that. And we'll send you the date.
My calendar's pretty full, but you can send it.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
If we start early in the morning, maybe.
I got some extra show. Drive that Skid steer.
That's what I was gonna say, if I come, I'll bring my Skid steer so I'll have one to drive.
Anything else, Mr. Dalton? Mr. Farley?
I have one item I would request that we go into closed session, talk about some litigation things at some point, either at the end of the meeting or wherever you want to do that.
Well, I think Dr. Hawthorne said he couldn't be here after lunch, so if we can get through consent calendar and energy planning and get to that, we could break and maybe go into that or come do that before and tell Dr. Hawthorne, since he's gonna be late anyway, that he can take a little more time. Does that sound all right to anybody? I don't, you know, that's my thinking on the calendar, I got all day. Is it okay?
Well, we're gonna take a.
What kind of clock do you have?
It's a hokey clock, runs backwards.
Hokey, that's the college, not the quality.
We can send out for some steamed broccoli and rice cakes.
There you go.
We're gonna move as fast as we can and we'll try to. You got all day with us, Scott?
Yes, can be.
Okay. We'll decide when we get through these three items, what we need to do. Mr. Hale, I'll bow to your wishes. Consent calendar, can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion, we approve consent calendar.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded. Anything on the consent calendar anybody needs to discuss? Okay, then we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye.
And aye, consent calendar's passed. Wind Energy Planning Commission recommendations, and this is coming from our local planning commission, so. Anybody want to make concern that they have, or then I know you went out with on G M.
I didn't get to go to the wheels in Richmond when they met down here at the, at the college. I'll refer to the Mr. Dalton and to the county attorney. Do we need the dual ordinance?
If you'd like an ordinance, you can consider this as a draft, I would ask that you send the county attorney to modify the wind game version.
The planning commission, several of the members went to this, and of course Tim and us did the other thing. The main thing that you are looking at here, they are, the EQ and the people with wind energy are recommending that if it's looking at coming to your community, that you look at developing ordinances. Your ordinances are not as much to prohibit it because the state wants alternative energy sources out there. But they said there's three things in particular you want to look at, and that is setbacks, noise, and decommissioning. So if they bring one in, set it up, put it on top of mountain ridge, and for some reason it doesn't work out or the company goes out of business, you're not sat there looking at non-functioning windmills left. So that's some of the things they push is to sit in developing these model utility ordinances. And that's what the planning commission recommended. They didn't want to start drafting one, they wanted to send it to the board and see if the board felt like it was something that they should have the county attorney do some drafting on and looking at to be prepared should they come in. Because that's what they heard from some of the other localities. When it was already coming in and beyond them, they were not able to go at that point in time and address those issues. So they're just sending us a recommendation of recommend either county attorney, them however, look at putting together a model wind ordinance. Utility scale, there are also residential scales and others, but the utility scale ordinance was one that they recommended.
And it, it makes sense. I mean, yeah, we may never get it, but yeah, there's so much interest out there that, yeah, the planning commission's point, just as Stephen said, is that, yeah, they would rather for the county to be prepared to handle it than have to react, you know, to handling it. So I, I think it's a good idea.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we send it to the county attorney for him to prepare an ordinance.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, it's moved and seconded. We send this to the county attorney for preparing an ordinance for utility scale and wind energy for With County. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any other business right now?
I do have a letter from AEP, extension amendment to the current Appalachian State Bill Agreement for linked services between local development and subdivision. It's just vetted and approved by VACO BML Steering Committee and I've asked for authorization to sign that, the extension of the agreement.
Trying to find.
Here's the book, that's, that's what it is.
I wonder I can find it here in it.
It's underneath that red book.
There it is, okay. Maybe it's back.
Okay.
That's not yet.
It's the next one down.
There we go. All right, Mr. Dalton. I was looking for this and didn't hear everything you said, so I think.
It's been vetted by VACO BML attorneys, the steering committee. They have recommended that we sign it, taking advantage of these discounted rates.
Okay, simple enough. Is there a motion that we sign the agreement with Appalachian Power?
I'll make. Go ahead. So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, what, I haven't found it yet, so what are the discounted rates?
Discounted rates, Joe, are the, I think there's a table.
It's in the back.
They just are public owned buildings?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, either vacant, city or county or camp, these are the rates, which are, I compared them to my own deal, they're a little bit cheaper.
That surely covers the schools and.
It does.
And if we go forward with the.
Transfer station, water authority, PSA.
Any agency of the count. Okay. That's it.
Okay. I have a motion and it's been seconded. Any other discussion? All right, we'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye. 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 Aye.
And aye, thank you. All right, Mr. Hale, can we go into closed session?
I'll make that motion if Mr. Housman will read the motion.
All right.
Well, then, if Mr. Hale moves to go into closed session for counsel.
I gotta get a second, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all right. I move that we go into closed session for consultation and briefings by legal counsel consultants or staff members pertaining to actual probable litigation or other legal matters pursuant to section two point two dash three seven one one A seven of the Code of Virginia. I mean, that's basically his motion. That was just a clarification.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.